Amy's out, Joel's out. Hey, 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 hey. Hi, good evening, everybody.
She is absent.
My name is Matthew Bremen, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll be filling in for Joel Kincaid, who is on vacation this week. So just be prepared for staff to be correcting me a lot as we go through this. So time is officially 7:01. Call this meeting to order. Roll call.
I'd like to note for the record that Mayor Joel Kincaid is absent and that Mayor Pro Tem Matthew Bremen will be presiding over the meeting. So with that, Counselor Perser?
Here.
Counselor Williams?
Yeah.
Counselor Bremen?
Yeah.
Counselor Cry?
Yeah.
Counselor Miller is excused absent. Counselor O'Brien?
Hasn't.
All right, great, thank you. I'd like to take a moment of silence and then pledge allegiance. Whoever would please stand. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. The true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to the liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. On next, on the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Great. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien? Motion passes five zero.
Great. Next up, we have a proclamation. You care to lead us on that one?
I care. Whereas the city of Fruta honors and respects all religious beliefs, cultures, creeds, and races, and is recognized as an inclusive city, defined in the November 20th, 2018 inclusivity proclamation, and seeks to learn from those who believe that equal spiritual opportunity and human rights belong to every citizen. And whereas various statistical sources calculate that there are between 4,000 and 5,000 different religions in the world, and that the city of Fruta and Mesa County are home to a number of such different faith paths. And whereas there are three or more interfaith organizations currently operating in Fruta and Mesa County, and are offering varied programs designed to bring more faith groups into dialogue together to discuss and better practice peace, harmony, cooperation, and understanding among all people. And whereas the Grand Valley Interfaith Network has been networking together to support the constructive activities of local interfaith operations in Mesa County since 1977. And whereas many Fruta faith groups have partnered with GVIN to create a series of activities and events in the days and weeks leading up to Interfaith Awareness Week, to be followed by days of individual reflection on connection and peace, which is open to all peoples of faith, including those who are not afflicted with any faith, affiliated with any faith. Pardon, pardon. And whereas the ongoing activities of harmony among a diversity of faith is a vital goal for all people throughout Fruta, North America, and the world. Now therefore be proclaimed, the city of Fruta, for the city of Fruta, on behalf, City Council for the city of Fruta, on behalf of the citizens of Fruta proclaim the week in August 2022 to be Interfaith Awareness Week in the city of Fruta. Furthermore, the city of Fruta hereby intends to annually recognize the importance of all beliefs in the community and to consider respect and value the uniqueness and importance of religious diversity in our community.
Thank you. Carleen?
Yes, thank you, if I may. I want to thank Councilmember Cry and the whole council for your ongoing support of Interfaith Awareness Week. And also thank my colleague, Colleen Mortenson, who is the Secretary for the Grand Valley Interfaith Network. And she comes to the given, I'm going to call it given from now on because of mouthful. She comes to Given on behalf of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints here in the valley. I am humbled to be here with you all on the ancestral lands of the Wampanoag youth people who continue to pass on their spiritual teachings to their, of their elders. It's an honor for me to receive the proclamation on behalf of Given. I'm Carleen Goldwight, the Vice President, and I use she and they pronouns. And I'm here to invite everyone to take your own moment in the next week during Interfaith Awareness Week to explore some of the different religious traditions in the world. Most of those traditions include teachings about serving the vulnerable, working for justice, and wanting for others to have the same benefits and opportunities that you have. In this country, we're in a moment that seems to be testing our commitment to a religiously pluralistic society. The founders knew a nation founded on liberty, equality, and justice must respect and accommodate all religions, religious expressions, and none. That's what Interfaith Awareness Week is all about. I thank you all for recognizing that, for inviting us to be here and speak to that. And I also thank the city council for the courage in the last year to decide to do something different at the beginning of your meetings to become a more inclusive organization. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Next up is public participation. This section is set aside for the city council to listen to the comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the council will not discuss the issues and will not take an official action under this section of the agenda. I ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to participate?
So I'm Archie Lopez, 1681 Ruby Lee Drive, Fruta. And like I said, I'd just like to come and open in prayer. So Father in heaven, we thank you so much for the day that you've given us. Thank you for this awesome town of Fruta and for these folks here that serve. We pray for wisdom, for unity, and all that they deal with, and just your blessing on this town. In your shew his name. Amen.
Is there anyone online?
There's no one online, Mayor Pro Tem.
Does anybody else have anything else? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. These are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time. They come before the council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. Members of the council may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consented section will be approved. A member of the council may vote no on specific items without asking that they be removed from the consent agenda for full discussion. Any items that is removed from the consent agenda will be placed at the end of the regular agenda. Are there any questions, concerns, or anything on the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I do want to mention that Johanna Van Waeren, who are appointing to the Tourism Advisory Board, was unaware that she was being appointed tonight, or she would be here. I had a meeting with her just a little bit before this.
But she is where she's going on the board.
She is now, yeah.
Okay.
And she accepts.
She accepts, yeah. She'll be at next week's meeting.
Okay. We have a first, a second, any other discussion?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Passage five zero.
And I apologize because I think I forgot to do the public comment on the consent agenda. First time, give me a break.
You didn't even yell at you, dude. You got away with it.
So I apologize. Are there any comments on the consent agenda?
One on line, online. Oh, my gosh.
All right. Next section is public hearings. So first up. You are up.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bremen and City Council. Good evening. This is Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk for the city of Fruta, presenting a new brew pub liquor license submitted by Basecamp Provisions. The definition of a brew pub, it allows the sale and consumption on premises of malt vinous and spirituous liquors. And it permits the manufacture of malt liquor on the licensed premises only if at least 15% of gross sales is is on food and drink income. Oh, wait, 15% of the gross is from the sale of food, basically. So when the council considers a liquor license application, there's two things according to state law that you must consider, and only these two things. One is the character of the applicant or applicants. And applicant Laura Fisher, her background checks came back all clear. As you can see from the preliminary findings that were included in the council packet. The second is the needs of the neighborhood survey, which was signed by 77 people who were in favor of having you approve the new brew pub liquor license. So the recommended emotion, recommended motion would be to approve the application for the brew pub liquor license for Basecamp Provisions at 155 North Mulberry Street. And Brian and Laura Fisher are present in the audience, so I will turn it over to them for any additional comments they may have.
Laura Fisher, my husband and I have been Fruta residents for just about five years now. I personally have had a lot of experience in bar and restaurants from all different sides. Most recently, I was one of the owners of Monumental Beer Works, but have sold off my interest in that in order to make our next little dream come true here in Fruta, which is really personal to us, just along being Fruta residents. We kind of plan on Brian or myself being there at least once a day, every day. It's kind of like our baby. We anticipate 15 to 20 employees total. All will be Safe Server or TIPS certified. Any employees that we anticipate handling in food in any way will have their food handler's card. We're going to do kind of a mix of order at the bar. You'll get your drink served to you at the bar and then order your food there and we'll do a combination of table service. We'll bring food out to you. Do plan to do a lot of local spirits, local wines. We will, our food based menu will be more like an elevated pub fare with some world influences. Kind of layout of our location, not much structurally has changed as part of the old JDs. The brew house will be kind of separated from everything in the north corner of the building. Facing right out onto Mulberry, but it will be a separate entrance from the building and no guests will be allowed back there unless they're going on a certified tour or something like that. Otherwise, the only other difference is we're adding a nice little patio out kind of towards the firehouse side. That's about it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
How soon are you opening?
That's an assumption, yes.
Thank you very much. Any public comment? Anybody online?
No one online.
Like, we, the monitor on this side is broken, so we actually can't see if there's anybody online. Is there actually anybody online at all? Okay. All right. So I'll close the public comments. Any, any other questions?
It wasn't an assumption. Sorry, I kind of jumped the gun there, but I was a little excited, so.
Then I'll make the motion that we, that we, sorry. I jumped the gun myself. I move we approve the issuance of a brew pub malt, venus, and spirituous liquor license for Basecamp Provisions LLC, doing business as Basecamp Provisions located at 155 North Mulberry Street.
Second.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. So next, we're going to move into legislative hearings. First one is Resolution 2022-19. And City Planner, Henry?
Thank you.
Lawrence, yours?
Appreciate the time.
Pronounce.
Yes. Since the monitor isn't working and I'm going to share my screen with my presentation, copies have been delivered to the council members here and I'll share my screen. So anybody in attendance will be able to see what is presented tonight. This application in front of you right now is Resolution 2022-19. This is a resolution to find property eligible for annexation. This process and procedure is set forth by state statute, which requires the city council to adopt a resolution to set up ability, which was done about a month ago by Resolution 2022. Once that resolution is passed by the council, staff through Colorado revised statute is required to issue or consecutive week legal notice in a local newspaper. Those dates are listed here in the presentation under process, and those were accomplished on June 10th, June 17th, June 24th, and July 1st. This essentially is inviting the public to attend this meeting to talk about the public hearing on whether or not a subject property that we're talking about is eligible for annexation. So we really need to stick to state statute with regards to the criteria that we look at as staff and present to not only the planning commission, but, but to you as the city council. And so the, the major one is one-sixth of the perimeter of the subject property is required to be contiguous with the existing city limits. And that is the, the major decision maker on whether or not the eligibility can be met. In this case, as you can see on slide three, the annexation map that was given, the contiguity has been successfully achieved with the Wildcat Ranch subdivision on the east side of the property, and the contiguity is approximately 654 feet, 660 feet on the west side or the east side. And what's required is 500 and, or no, this is a different one. 330 feet. So on the east side, it's bordered 659 feet, and the requirement needs to be 316 feet. So we've met that one-sixth contributing, and essentially we just add up the perimeter and multiply that by this one-six percent. So with that, that's basically really what this is set forth to do and to establish whether or not this property is eligible to be annexed. And I should mention, the property that we're talking about is located at 1834 J Road, and it's approximately 4.99 acres. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I turn the turnover to the applicant. I don't think he asked here.
Nobody's here from the Tigo annexation. Correct? All right. So next, anybody from wish to make public comment? I'm assuming we're still not seeing anybody online?
No one's online.
Okay. Any questions? All right. With that, then, is there a motion?
I move we approve Resolution 2022-19, a resolution of the Fruity City Council finding approximately 4.99 acres of property located at 1834 J Road, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta.
Second.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Perser? Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, Henry, you're up again with Resolution 2020-20.
Thank you again. My name is Henry, City Planner, City of Fruta. The presentation before you tonight is on Resolution 2022-20. This is a resolution to determine the eligibility of annexation of property located 2419 Road, whether or not is eligible to be annexed into the city. This process is set forth by state statute, and we have followed that in accordance with the regulations in place, and the city council adopted Resolution 2022-14, which set the public hearing date for tonight. It's a resolution to set a public hearing date to determine the eligibility of said annexation. And then once that's accomplished and the city council has acknowledged that staff is required to publish four consecutive week legal notice in a local newspaper, and those dates were accomplished on June 10th, June 17th, June 24th, and July 1st. The major decision tonight is whether or not the subject property has the one-sixth contiguity requirement with the existing city limits. On slide three that you have with you, it shows the annexation map and the required contiguity that's needed based on the perimeter is 528 feet. The contiguity that's been achieved with the subject property that was recently annexed earlier this year, known as the Weston Estates Annexation, just to the west. That parcel borders the subject property by approximately 660 feet for a total perimeter of 3,301 feet in total. So we get that continuity, and so that's why staff has recommended that this resolution be approved, acknowledging that the subject property, which is approximately 15.05 acres, located at 102419 Road, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta, and the, and that concludes my presentation.
Is there anybody here from? Alice?
I have not seen them.
Okay. From that, we'll move into public participation input. This is a rowdy crowd tonight. Uh, I'm appreciative of, assuming still nobody online.
No one online.
All right, this is really making it easy. All right. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-20, a resolution of the Fruity City Council finding approximately 15.05 acres of a property located at 102419 Road eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta.
First.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Great. Next up, ordinance 2022-15, second reading. And Margaret, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is an ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Excel Energy. The term of the franchise agreement is for 20 years, and it is, the city has the authority to grant a franchise agreement under the terms of the city charter. Franchise agreement essentially is kind of like a lease agreement. It allows a utility to use our streets and rights of ways for their infrastructure, for their utility services. In exchange for that, they pay a franchise fee. In this case, the franchise fee is 3% of the gross revenues to the city for the right to use that right of way. Then in addition to that 3% fee, they also contribute 1% to an undergrounding fee that allows us to underground or make use of those funds to underground existing overhead lines within the city of Fruta. There are a number of lengthy, I mean, the franchise agreement is quite lengthy, and so there's a number of provisions in there. But that's kind of a short, short story for it. There is a new section in this franchise agreement that was not in the existing agreement concerning environment, conservation, and the pursuit of reduction of carbon emissions. And other terms of the agreement have been updated to reflect changes in the industry and municipal practices and regulations. Just as a fiscal impact, the city received $337,000 in 2021 in franchise fees from Excel Energy and anticipates receiving similar amounts in the future, you know, with adjustments for growth in the community and additional services that they provide with to residents in the city of Fruta. The, the franchise agreements, the revenues produced by those agreements help the city maintain its infrastructure. And the recommendation of staff is to adopt the franchise agreement and the ordinance for a term of 20 years. We do have a representative from Excel Energy here to speak if you have any questions or would like additional information.
Brad, would you like to get up and speak?
Thank you for recognizing and letting us come up here. Officially, I would just like to thank working with the staff. They've been fantastic to work with. It really has been a pleasure, and obviously we would like to continue the good working relationship we've had and hopefully move forward with a new franchise agreement that'll be good till 2042. Thanks.
Any public comment? All right, nobody online? All right. Any additional questions from?
I noticed you said public, or you said Excel. How does that public service and Excel, is it same type? Okay. I move we approve ordinance 2022-15, adopting the franchise agreement with public service company as presented.
A second.
Any other discussion?
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Passage five zero.
Thank you. Margaret, don't go anywhere because we're toward this 2022-16.
Yeah, this is very similar to what we just discussed, except this is a franchise agreement with Grand Valley Rural Power. Excel Energy and Grand Valley Rural Power have different designated areas within the region of which they serve. This agreement came about, I don't know, twenty plus years ago or longer. So they weren't having build new and new areas depending on where the city annexed. So the, the agreement is the same terms, 20-year term, 3% of gross revenues, a 1% undergrounding fee. And the territory is really the main change, the changes between the two agreements is this is the Grand Valley Rural Power service area. And the fiscal impact is a little bit different. So smaller area in the city, so our city received 34,000 in franchise fees from Grand Valley Rural Power in 2021, and we anticipate receiving similar amounts in the future as growth continues. Those will obviously go up.
Derek with Grand Valley Rural Power.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. I want to share Brad's sentiments as well, that we appreciate the opportunity to work with City of Fruta and staff. Again, this is, you know, basically an opportunity for us to continue to provide service to the citizens of Fruta and also, you know, do it in a responsible way that we follow the guidelines of this and, you know, provide safe, reliable power.
Derek, anticipating a rowdy public input section next. Still nothing online? All right. Any questions? Motion?
I move to approve ordinance 2022-16, adopting the franchise agreement with Grand Valley Rural Power as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Counselor Williams? Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. That wraps up our legislative hearings for the evening, and next we're going to move into our administration, administrative, sorry, agenda where I have our auditors report.
Okay. If you recall, the last, our last meeting in June, we presented the financial statements as a draft to the city council and the fiscal health analysis, and went into kind of the details there. The auditors come in and perform field work for about a week and test all of our financial data so that they can form an opinion on whether or not we're accurately representing our financial statements. And Lisi Heeman with Chadwick Stein, Kirchner, and Davis is here to tell you their findings on that report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and the Fruta City Council for having me come here and speak tonight. And as Margaret said, my name is Lisi Heeman. I'm with Chadwick Stein, Kirchner, Davis here in Grand Junction, and I'm an audit principal, and I was in charge of the audit this year for the city. I'm going to go through a little bit about what we do as part of the audit, what our responsibilities are, and what management's responsibilities are for the audit. So our responsibility is to plan and perform our audit to be able to provide an opinion on the financial statements in a nutshell. In order to do that, we come in and we do a lot of inquiry of people working in the city. In order to do that, we come in and we do a lot of inquiry of people working in the city. We do a lot of analytics, so we, we look at information provided to us, compare it to prior year, to budget, to what we expect based on the local economy and other, you know, factors like number of users or number of residents in the town to determine if there are risk areas in the financial statements. We also look at the processes and procedures that the city has in place in their accounting function to determine if there are areas where we think there are weaknesses. So we do a lot of walkthrough testing and we do a lot of inquiries. So we'll ask members of the accounting staff, what are the processes in place so that you make sure that disbursements are for appropriate expenditures of this? Or what do you do to make sure that receipts that come into the city get to the proper place and make it into the books? So we take that information, say, do these policies look like they would prevent errors in the financial statements or maybe prevent fraud? And then we walk through those to make sure that they're in place and we do a little testing so we can rely on those as well. If we found anything when we did that testing where we thought there could be a weakness in internal control and maybe something could slip through and cause a misstatement or fraud, we would be required to report that to you in writing and we didn't have any such instances this year. We don't do enough testing of the internal controls to be able to provide an opinion on it. But from what we looked at, the controls look sufficient and in place as described. We also look at things like journal entries. So the, the town does a lot of journal entries in order to close the books on a monthly basis and particularly at year end. So we look at that activity to see if there's anything unusual at the end of the year or, or unusual activity during the year. And we look at the internal controls over that also to make sure it looks reasonable. We also look for gray areas in the financial statements and if there were any, we would report those to you as well. So we didn't find anything in the financial statements where we thought an accounting standard could be applied one way or another. Everything was pretty straightforward this year. There was nothing really unusual. If we had differences with management on something or we disagreed on how something should be shown in the audit report or in the financial statements, we would report that to you. We didn't have any such disagreements. And we felt like management was very cooperative with us, provided us with the information that we needed to be able to provide an opinion. And we didn't feel like we were barred from talking to anybody. If we came in and felt like we weren't allowed to talk to certain people or we weren't allowed to see certain information, that might raise a red flag. And we didn't have anything like that. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, meaning we think they're fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that audit report is right at the front of the financial statements. And this year it's got an extra page in it, so we added more detail about what the auditor's responsibility is for the financial or for the financial audit. Management also plays a role in being responsible for the financial statements and ultimately management is responsibility or responsible for the fair presentation of the statements. So we come in, we review the statements that Margaret puts together in this case and she's ultimately responsible for that fair presentation. We do testing and try to make sure that it's all fairly presented, but ultimately management's responsible. And then management is also, of course, responsible for having proper accounting policies and procedures in place. Does anyone have questions for me about the audit process or the report? Yes.
Personally, you walked up with a stack of papers, which always makes me nervous.
It's just the financial statements in case I needed them.
Curiosity, as part of your audit, do you do pen testing or do you work with the IT department for penetration testing?
We do a little bit of testing. So we do walk through, we get an understanding of the internal controls over the IT system, but we don't do a lot of in-depth testing of the IT system.
So assuming I have this correct, thank you for the report and there's no action. Or do we have to vote to approve the auditor's report? Okay, I'm getting some head nods. All right.
I move to approve the city of Fruta 2021 financial statements and accept the auditor's report.
Second.
Further discussion?
Counselor Reiman?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Lisa. I don't think there's public.
Thank you.
I'm looking over at Mike. There was no public comment. Okay. And I think up next is Chief Kraus. Welcome.
Mayor Protem and counsel, thank you for the opportunity to discuss some information regarding the distribution of Colorado opioid settlement monies and some potential council action as to how the city's portion of those funds should be allocated. Just by way of providing some historical context, as I'm sure you're aware, the state entered into litigation with some pharmaceutical companies regarding their role and contributing to the opioid epidemic here in the state of Colorado. As a result of that litigation, the pharmaceutical companies agreed to settle and provide monies to the state and local governments to be used to abate the opioid crisis. A countywide governance committee has been formed that oversees decision-making related to how those funds are distributed as well as setting goals for the use of those funds based upon the parameters of the settlement. The entities involved in that are the governments that are due to receive the settlement funds as well as some other subject matter expert partners such as providers of substance use disorder treatment. The coalition has established a collective strategy for the next two years of how those settlement funds should be used and could be most beneficial to all the contributing partners as well as the community as a whole. City is due to receive about a half a percent of the funds allocated to our region. And that results in us receiving just over $2,000 a year for the next 18 years. To provide some information to help in your decision-making as to how the collective funds might be used if they were all to be used collectively as, as a region within the frameworks of prevention and education, treatment, recovery, harm reduction, and the criminal justice system. The governance board has developed some overarching goals to which settlement monies may be applied for the next two years with continuous evaluation and forming the goals as well as future investment. Just to not to get too much in the weeds or detail as to some of the goals, but just to give you an idea. Some of the goals involve increasing awareness and education about substance use amongst young people and to reduce the number of young people who enter the justice system due to substance use or other mental health challenges here in the county. Increasing the number of clinical professionals in counseling for substance use disorders as well as increasing the access of low-income individuals within our community to be able to enter into those substance use disorder programs. Also increasing peer engagement following acute care such as emergency department visits and hospitalizations as well as supporting and engaging with individuals who are leaving institutionalization such as incarceration, leaving the jail with substance use disorders. Finally, increasing the number of qualified peer workforce to support recovery efforts for those individuals living with substance use disorders and increasing the variety of recovery support activities that are available within the county. The board is also contracted with United Way of Mesa County to develop and administer the application process for entities that may be requesting funds and we're currently in the review stage of the applications as we speak. And I failed to mention that I'm actually sitting as the city's representative on that governance committee and it have a voting voice in how those funds are allocated to the entities that are applying for them. So the, I, I think the issue here is how best can the monies that are allocated to the city of Fruta be used? And I think it may go without saying that probably $2,000 a year for the city might not go very far. It's based upon population and that's how it came up. That's, that's our, you know, half a percent of our regional funds. So it seems like based upon the goals that have been set and some of the, the outcomes that are hoped to be seen by the usage of these funds that contributing to the overall monies collected by all of the contributing entities might be the best usage of those ones from, that are due to the city of Fruta. There are two options available to council, the first being allocating the funds designated the city of Fruta to the established Mesa County Governance Board to oversee, which would be the opt-out option. Or the council could, could choose to receive the funds allocated to the city of Fruta and keep those in the city's general fund, which would be the opt-in option. So staff's recommendation would be to authorize the city manager to authorize the allocation of the settlement funds attributed to the city of Fruta to the collective Mesa County Initiative and Governance Board, which would be the opt-out option as part of the monies available by grant to applying agencies providing prevention, treatment, and recovery services for opioid addiction. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to try.
The governance board that they have, how many members are in that? Do you have an idea?
Anecdotally, I would say probably sixteen to eighteen.
Okay.
And the voting members include the representatives of the government bodies that would be receiving.
So just those ones that are listed, the five or six. So it seems to me like his vote is pretty valuable, more so than the 2,000 that we would just get yearly. Having him on the board and being a voting member that has sway over all that money towards Mesa County or towards Mesa County in general, seems like that's, that makes him to me, I know, Rayner, that we would move forward with the opt-out.
Without, I know you don't want to really get into the weeds too much, but I am curious, just your own like heart for like where you, how would you see some of the engagement and education for the youth? Like what would you like to see that be implemented? How would you like to see that be implemented?
Yeah, I think the, the hope would be again, if we had some entities that could maybe inform that somewhat for receiving the funds, but I certainly think our school resource officers could have a voice in that and a role in providing that kind of prevention information regarding substance abuse and specifically around opioid abuse. And just in general, I think a collective countywide effort would be really beneficial as opposed to each government, each department kind of going out with their own, their own message rather than a collective, community-wide message.
Okay, so the government, governing board is going to decide how? Let me see if I can ask the right question. Well, that's, I was wondering what the connection with the United Way was and is it that this governing board is going to decide a countywide approach for all of this money? Or is it that they're going to be the decision makers and groups can come and ask for money and they can say yea or nay and write them a check?
Governance board does both. So the governance board is responsible for developing like the goals that I mentioned that those are, those were the board's discussion. And that's where I think our, our partners who aren't, aren't voting members, but are subject matter experts like the, the local providers really help inform that discussion as to what kind of recovery services, treatment services, that sort of thing are needed for opioid addiction. But the, the nexus with United Way is they were contracted to administer, to develop and administer the application process for entities that would provide those services. And once those applications are received, then the board reviews the applications and determines what, if any, of the available funds would go to those entities that are proposing to be able to provide resources that meet the goals that the board is set for.
I'm assuming that because I'm familiar with United Way, they've got their logic model which they use for applications and kind of the grant process to collect all those and then hand those applications to kind of fit within their framework of review or the governance board to make the final decision. And then there's just the fiscal agents for that.
Exactly, exactly. We, yeah, we met with representatives of the United Way who developed those applications and provided them with the parameters that we would need as a board to make decisions based upon the, the requirements of the settlement as well as our goals. And so United Way's role is only in accepting those applications and then distributing those applications to the board to make the decision on the allocation of the funds.
So the board's both going to determine countywide goals and then also hand out money to people whose applications meet those goals.
How is the, how is this governance board decided? Like how were you appointed?
I think what, uh, my boss asked.
Is that, is that how it does? Is that, does it go to the managers?
Each government was provided the opportunity to provide a representative to the board and then it was up to that government to determine who that was going to be.
Yeah, Janet Rowland or Commissioner Rowland was kind of the, the person with the county who was organizing the group and had reached out to the mayor. And I want to say the mayor brought it up in one of these and I was going to be the appointee. But then we found out kind of what, more what the subject matter was and most of the, most of the communities are providing their law enforcement because of such a good connection. So we appointed Chief Kraus.
So both, basically all of them are appointed by the municipality that they're, they come from. Perfect.
So you feel like in your professional opinion, the best approach is to, is to join this, is to opt out and, and go with it for the county. My, my, if, I have a little, I have some reservations just because it seems like you're doing two big things at the same time. You're giving out money and then you're also trying to move a project and it's $2.2 million, which can go really quickly. So I guess I have a little bit of reservation, but I also trust your professional opinion.
I appreciate that. It is a very big project and especially when you think about the fact that this is an 18-year right section of receiving these funds and how things can change much in 18 years. But so that's why the board decided just to establish the two-year goals and to then try to continuously evaluate. Are they the right goals? Are we meeting the goals? Is, is the money being put toward those goals being effective? And if not, how do we pivot and make the changes that are going to be more effective? And then how does that play into where we need to go for the next 16 years after those two years?
So that governance board is also in charge of looking at the data and
Right.
and seeing if you're successful in meeting your goals and then changing.
That, that feedback loop is built into the process with the entities that may be receiving the grant funds. They're a part of the, the requirement is that they report back on with the data.
Thank you. Yeah, it's that logic model that United Way uses in terms of, it's an outcome-based evaluation. Any other questions? So to move forward, we, somebody comfortable making a motion?
I move, we authorize the city manager to authorize allocation of settlement funds attributed to the city of Fruta to the collection Mesa County Initiative and Governance Board. The opt-out option is part of the monies available by grant to applying agencies providing prevention, treatment, and recovery services for opioid addiction.
First?
I'll second.
Counselor, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Thank you. Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Reiman?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, that wraps up the administrative agenda. So next off to the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem and members of council. Just a few items. First, Counselor Amy Miller asked me to express her apologies for missing tonight due to illness. She did want me to bring
She did want me to bring up, we had sent an, or I had sent an email to the city council on July 11th. She had been approached by Ariel Brockfield, who is working with, through the library system and to be a regional film liaison, and that requires a number of recommendations, but one from a local government leader. And so wanted to see if you all felt comfortable with Amy providing that letter. It's not committing the city to anything. We did have our communications and engagement specialists, Ciara. Look into it. Seems like a great benefit to the community as a whole, but it's, it's not a direct, you know, appointee from, from the city of fruit necessarily, but she needs a letter of support from a local official. So wanted to make sure, see if anybody had any concerns about that. I don't think you need to vote, but we just need to make sure everybody's okay before Amy sends that. She didn't want to do that on her own. Okay, great. Thank you. And then today we, we did our, the, was it the second episode of For the Love of Fruit? So Ciara and Mackenzie and our, who does communications with the Parks and Recreation Department have created this new radio show for the love of fruit on KFM, and it's once a month and they're doing an awesome job on that. They invited Janine and I to talk about the logo history and process. If you, if you're not aware, the downtown advisory board had submitted the logo we currently have when we did a process soliciting logos. So Jean, Janine was the chair at the time and currently on the downtown advisory board. And so we, we talked about that. And then we also talked about boards and commissions and how people can be, be involved and, and what, and how to apply and those types of things. So that is great and appreciated Janine being there and definitely Ciara and Mackenzie for making that happen. It turns into a podcast, so people can listen to each episode along the way. If you ever have ideas for future episodes, be, feel free to let us know. They ask a question at the end. What do people not know? Or what do you, of all the guests, what, what do you think people don't realize about fruit? And then they share comments that we received from the public about the love they have for fruit. So it's, it's some good consistency and they were getting good, great accolades from Coach, who's been doing this for a number of years, even in his retirement now. So we also today had our roadmaps recovery, regional team meeting in person. That's a, that this is a two-year process with seven, I think it's seventeen partners. So all the economic development agencies in the valley, all the cities, the counties, the school districts, CMU, the chambers, and we are the, the lead agency on that. And that is basically a program that the state is paying for. This was post-COVID related to areas for recovery or resiliency. So they are paying EPS, who we are working with, as you know, for housing, but they are paying EPS to do a study Mesa County wide on how to, on some certain areas that we can hone into as a large partnership for economic development in the future. And so the next step with that is they will be providing our partnership group a draft by early September. And then we'll start kind of coming through that, but towards the end of the year, hopefully having a final report for Mesa County and how that can, and it's very focused on the hub of the area in Grand Junction, but then also as much so on how all the smaller communities, even into Culver and Debeck can benefit from efforts that we put forward. And then I attended a Chaffa open house in Grand Junction today, and there were a number of representatives throughout the valley. Really enjoyed, enjoyed it. There was more of a listening tour and there was, ended up having lots of discussion about our down payment assistance program with everybody. And then wanted to ask or James probably remembers, but with the mayor gone, we have a lot of ice cream left over. And so we wanted to surprise people at the beginning of one of the, one of the remaining concerts. We won't necessarily market it. We'll just, all that we still have, we could probably show up, anybody that can probably even early as people are setting up and just hand out the rest of that. Do you remember James, which?
We were thinking that the Frank Breger Orchestra would probably be the most appropriate.
That's right.
As it would be the most similar to the Centennial Band Performance.
And that's next week.
Or I don't have, boy, I do have it.
I think it is. Ciara is looking it up, but.
But I think that was the one, as long as the storage wasn't an issue.
Right.
And I think we've frozen now. Figured out, obviously. So I think that that would probably be the best one.
Okay. Do you want, what do you think about, we could do it right at seven or we, or, well, it starts at 7:30. So if you want to meet it, there are plenty of people setting up by seven. So if you wanted to come at seven, we could start handing it out then, or if we, or if you'd like to wait till the music's starting, but. Yeah. I think that's less disruptive and there's a ton of people there at that point. So seven o'clock on the 28th, just plan on whoever can be there. Okay, great.
That's the best thing to do.
Okay. All right. And then the last thing is next week, we have our workshop at 6:30 and we will, one item that's on there is the Mulberry Design. So we'll have a presentation by design workshop virtually, and then some discussion on that. See where they are at in their process since the last meeting. And then the other item is will essentially be kind of a rapid fire checklist of just quick updates on some of the work that we're doing and checking in with you all on some discussions we need to schedule coming up. All kind of leading into the retreat that will be the following week on August 2nd at Highline at five o'clock. And that's everything I have tonight. Thank you.
Move it to council reports and actions.
I have nothing.
I didn't have any meetings. I did have someone approach me about, asking about having water fountains turned back on in the parks. I imagine they were turned off for COVID. Air start, and it was funny because I, I noticed that I was out of town and I was in, or was I went rifle and I stopped, get the kids and the dog out of the car and their water fountains were on. I was like, hey, water fountains are back. And then I came home and then a couple of days later, someone came up to me and said, hey, when are we going to get our water fountains turned back on? So that's, that I would bring that up in the next meeting. So I'm bringing it up.
Thanks for doing that. I wasn't aware they weren't back on and I don't recall any reason they have to be off anymore. So we'll check on that.
He said bubblers. I don't, I don't, I've never heard that term before, but that's what he said. He's like, he's like, can you find, why are we not have the bubblers on? And I was like, you mean water fountains? So I don't know. Apparently he tried one somewhere and it wasn't on. So anyway, that was just me being approached and I wanted to bring it up.
My water fountains, I thought you were talking about water features.
No, water fountains, bubblers. Now, now you learn another, see, I, I am bubblers. You learned that today. There you go. Stick with me. I'll keep you. All kinds of stuff.
GRV, the transit group hasn't met. And I guess Youth Action Council met last Monday and I apologize. I haven't put on my calendar yet until just now I put on my calendar. So I don't know if anything happened at that meeting that anybody knows about, they want to talk about, but I don't know about it. So more to report later.
Can I circle back? I'm still getting used to the action part of this. I had a question about the fruit of fireworks at, in the state park. The, there's this bright light that they turn.
Oh, yes.
Um.
Ten minutes before the end of the show.
Well, no, this time it was before the fireworks ever began and it stayed on the entire time. This is if you are in the actual state park and it like, it's in the parking lot, but it doesn't take time to turn on or I mean, they didn't need extra generator time or anything. It just, they turned it on and left it on the entire time. So you're having to like shield the lights and you can see the fireworks.
I'll second this sentiment.
This has been an ongoing for several years and last, most recent, it was not a problem. But again, this year it was. So there was, it wasn't just my personal opinion. There were several people that were concerned about, about that. And I don't know if that is even anything we can do, anything about it. That's.
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head what it is, but we can look into that.
Okay.
What that is.
And then they can just turn it on right when it's over. It's really, it's meant for people to be able to get out safely. Like that's why it's on. It's, it's the plugged in big white light.
Gotcha.
So I thought about it, but I did not do that.
House of City County.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I didn't do that. And then I had one more thing along those lines that now I can't remember. So. Okay.
Um, fruit. Chamber of Commerce with their 7:00 AM meetings, we set up coffee and burritos. 23 is the SBDC workshop. We have the farmer's market continuing and next Tuesday is coffee, coffee and community connections. For GJAP, I can finally say we're no longer looking for an executive director. So bad news is the workforce is probably but not GJAP's issue. So Curtis Engelhardt is the new leader of GJAP. So we'll be welcoming him tomorrow. So.
Yep. Can I have an answer as to, I think I know the answer, but I don't want to presume why the building is shut down, the bathrooms during the Thursday night concerts. I've been getting that question a lot.
Yeah. So I think starting, I think it's starting this week, but I have to double check. We're going to have those, have it back open. It's kind of a, so for years, staff have been dealing with running kids out of inside the building. And so I think they did a trial of, of doing, but, but two things didn't go so well with that. One, I mean, who likes porta potties? Two, we only had one, which is less than what we would normally require for an event. I talked to Mark Mancuso about that about, I think a week or so ago, trying to remember if, I think it was last week and he just came up with the, you know, it, it's, it's cheaper for us to have one more staff person just kind of staying in the building anyway than it is to service. So we're getting them back open. We, we did have, we had one email. I received an email about that. A week or two ago was the first complaint and, and unfortunately, I mean, it sounded like there had been a line, you know, people are missing the concert because they're waiting in line to go. So it didn't make any sense. We're, we fixed that or we're fixing that.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Just real quick, along the lines of Thursday night, this, I told Tom earlier today, but the band that's playing this Thursday had to cancel. So there's been a rescheduling. So I don't know if we need to expedite putting that up on the social media or anything, but it's the lip will be the new, I sent Tom who it was, but they'll be filling in.
Right.
I got this reputation.
All right. Well, thank everybody for speaking tonight. So greatly appreciated. So the time is eight o'clock.